The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, October ninth, 2018, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Pastor Odell Hughes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come, and I will thank you, God, for this day. Thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We recognize you as our Creator and sustainer of even the universe. Thank you, Lord, for how you have blessed us, how you have kept us, and how you blessed our nation and within our nation. You've blessed our cities, our states, and even our counties. We thank you now for an opportunity that you've given us to serve you and serve humanity. We pray now for your guidance and wisdom, your guidance, wisdom, and understanding in the path that is set before us. May we work from an attitude of love as we address the needs of your people. We thank you now for equipping us for the journey, and may we always continue to give your name the praise and the glory. It is in the name of my Lord and Savior Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hughes. Next on the agenda are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Kozinski.
Mr. President, I would like to reappoint John Matthews to the Animal Control Commission, Dale Devine to On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board, John Lynn to On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board, and John Murray to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. John Matthews is reappointed to the Animal Control Commission, and Dale Devine, John Lynn, and John Murray are reappointed to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September eleventh, 2018, public meeting? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the September eleventh, public meeting, are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee? No report. Bill number sixty-six eighteen is tabled tonight at the request of the petitioner. Next on the agenda, first reading. Clerk, will you please read bill number seventy-one eighteen?
Bill number seventy-one eighteen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number seventy-three eighteen, Art, San Francisco County Council, Title III, Administration by Amending Chapter thirty-four, Finances, County Funds, Establishing Section thirty-four, dot four-three, Non-Reverting County Commercial Economic Development Fund. Petitioner, Jessica Clark. Bill number seventy-three eighteen is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee.
Seventy-five eighteen, Art, San Francisco County Council, Title fifteen, Land Use by Amending Chapter one-five-zero, General Divisions, Licensing and Registration, Registration Requirements, Permit Fees, Establishing Section one-five-zero, dot three-one, Dot-A-Road, Adopt Spot Permits. Petitioner, Jessica Clark.
Bill number seventy-five eighteen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next are resolutions. Clerk, will you please read bill number sixty-seven eighteen?
The resolution of the San Francisco County Council approving the issuance of taxable bonds by the San Francisco County Public Library and taking other actions related thereto petition San Francisco County Public Library. Petitioner?
Yes, President of the Council and members of the Council, Phil Fasenda, one hundred, North Michigan Street, South Bend, Barnes and Thornburg, representing the library district. Before you, is a resolution to approve a bond resolution that was adopted by the library board in August. The resolution contemplates a five, a not-to-exceed-five-million-dollar bond that would be issued by the library district. It is to, the details with regard to the bond is, it's anticipated, your resolution says, to mature not later than January two thousand twenty-six. It's anticipated that it would be a shorter maturity than that, probably two thousand twenty-four. Overall debt service will come in around five-point-six million dollars. This bond is, will not increase the tax rate above two thousand seventeen levels because the existing bond issue that the library has on the books, it's a two thousand seven bond, is rolling off after one more debt service payment next year. It's part of a, this is part of a larger project, so this is financing a portion of a continuing education center that, it's the library's portion of it. The library is currently in negotiations with the Community Foundation of St. Joseph County and the city of South Bend with regard to the remaining funds necessary to construct the continuing education center that will be, that will be constructed on the same city block as the main library and will form a new campus library, a new library campus, excuse me, including a courtyard that will join the two buildings. That additional building is anticipated to cost around twenty million dollars, so this would be a five-million-dollar portion of that. I have with me Deb Poota, the Director of the Library, who has some additional background and can answer any questions you might have about the project.
Thanks, Deb.
Thanks, Deb.
Deb Poota, five-nine-eight-six-six, Myrtle Road, South Bend. I think we have the opportunity, as a library and a community, to really accomplish something extraordinary with everyone who lives here. Our main library is a destination for the entire county. Last year, nearly two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand people walked through the doors, and they come and they stay. I think it's natural that we all think of libraries as the book place, and books in paper or digital or audio will always be a big part of what we offer, but what we really need now is space. The current main library, built in nineteen sixty and renovated in nineteen eighty-nine, was never built to hold the trainings, the events, the collaborations, and the programs that we're offering today. And in this digital age, people still need places to come together as a community center, and we serve that purpose. We address literacy, we address workforce development, small business vitality, technology skills, and we are certainly a part of the quality of life in this community, and our doors are open to everyone. Libraries, I think, are more important than ever, and digital inclusion is vital to success in this day and age. Last year, our Wi-Fi was used four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand times, and we logged a hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand hours of computer use from library computers, and that doesn't include all the people who came in and brought their own devices. We were just awarded the twenty-eighteen Indiana Library Federation Award for Programming. Last year, we offered over twelve-hundred public programs that nearly fifty-thousand people attended, and when I took a look at tonight's calendar, just at the main library, as we speak, we have Tech Tuesdays going on now where people can bring in their devices or their software problems, and we help with that. We have a sign language class at six o'clock where people can learn sign language. We have yoga at six, and we have a Talk With Your Baby at six-thirty. So that's just what we're doing, let alone what the community is using us for. Our community is depending on us to have the space for all these things to happen. Last year, thirty-two-hundred groups booked a meeting in library spaces, and we turn away people all the time because our rooms are already booked. I think libraries are the safe spaces, and they are the community living room. People tell us one reason they moved to this community is because of the strength of the public library here. We have a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand active cardholders, and forty-six-thousand of them live outside city limits and in the county. Our library is a living, breathing organization that we've created for and with the people in this community, and this project puts us in a position to serve the next generation in St. Joseph County. So I think either Phil or I would be-
Happy to answer any questions.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We will now open the public hearing on bill sixty-seven eighteen. Is anyone which has addressed the council in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on sixty-seven eighteen. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass, bill number sixty-seven eighteen is made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Faal?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tlande?
No.
Mr. Tanzraik?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number sixty-seven eighteen was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number sixty-nine eighteen.
The resolution establishing fund thirteen-hundred ineligible deduction. Petitioner, honor.
Mike Hammond, San Francisco County Auditor, with offices on the second floor in this building. And we were advised by the recent, during the recent State Board of Accounts audit that the county council has to formally act on establishing this ineligible deduction fund, which we've been using since two thousand fourteen. So this is the original ineligible deduction fund that the auditor's office used and acquired a pretty large sum of funds. It was, at one point in time, it was up to around three million dollars. I've undertaken to start spending that down. As you recall, also, the state came and they said, they asked us to set up another fund whereby the maximum that you could have in that fund would be a hundred thousand dollars, and the rest had to be turned back to the general fund. So eventually, this fund, which now has a cash balance of about six-hundred-thousand dollars, will be down to zero in a couple of years, and I guess it will be a moot point, but until that time, I guess, the council has to formally act in setting up this fund in something that we all should have done four years ago, apparently.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Any questions for council from the auditor? Thank you. We will now open a public hearing on bill number sixty-nine eighteen. Does anyone which is speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone which is speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on sixty-nine eighteen?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass, bill number sixty-nine eighteen, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any further council discussion on sixty-nine eighteen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Faal?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tlande?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number sixty-nine eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number seventy-eight eighteen?
Resolution of the San Francisco County Council authorizing approval of an economic development agreement between the San Francisco County, the San Francisco County Redevelopment Commission and S.F. Motors, Inc. Petitioner, S.F. Motors.
Good evening. Bill Shalio, Economic Development, with offices on the eleventh floor. The resolution before you today is the resolution which would approve the development agreement that we have presented to the council, also have presented to the Board of Commissioners and to the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Commission, at their meeting this morning, approved this development agreement. We're asking for your support and approval of the development agreement as submitted. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions for council from Mr. Shalio? Mr. Kozinski?
Mr. Morton, I would like to make a motion to table this to our meeting on September third. In regards, and the reason for that is, I would like to see Mr. Shalio have, attempt to have a conversation with the building trades in regards to this project, and see if he can't come up with some sort of agreement in regards to the improvements of the facility.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Actually, turn back to committee.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Any council special, I'm sorry. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a motion and a second on the floor to table bill number seventy-
Send back to committee.
Pardon?
Send back to committee.
Send back, I'm sorry, send back to committee.
I think that's what-
Until our committee meeting, upcoming committee meeting, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments on that, on that motion and that second? Mr. Nolan?
Just, if Mr. Shalio has the, if any logistical problems presented or-
Well, I guess specifically-
... plan forward for what this is gonna-
Yeah, no, I guess specifically, we'd want to understand what parts of this development agreement you would like to fall under a discussion with the labor unions. I mean, to open it up broadly, to say, you know, we want every development that occurs within here to be required to be union-related, I don't know if that's appropriate in this particular case. We've had several meetings to have this be an opportunity discussion point, so I'm a little disappointed that we're having this happen today. If we need to table it because that's the will of the council, I guess we can do that, but it's, you know, we need to have some specific clarification of what's being requested. Todd Leahy from the company is here. We'd had some conversation before the meeting. There are very specific elements of this plant which can't be done by any, you know, contractually are contracted out to other bodies. I don't know what there is specifically that you would like to see covered under this, but I guess I would ask for that clarification between, probably now and the end of the week, if we've got to set up a meeting between now and the twenty-third. So again, a little disappointed that we're headed this direction, but if that's the will of the council, that's the will of the council.
Mr. Morton? I'm not, Bill, I'm not suggesting that, you know, this whole project needs to be union labor. We're just saying, try to attempt to meet with them and see what kind of issues they're having, just so they have a chance to come to the floor and see what exactly what's going to go on.
Sir, are we gonna then open up the opportunity for non-union labors to have the same conversation? I just want to make sure that I'm having the-
The case is different, Bill.
Okay. I, we have provisions in the development agreement that says the company's supposed to use best reasonable commercial practices to find workers and companies to do the work in the facilities. Again, I think that, that's a strong enough language for, again, we have no public money going into this project, so I don't know that this is an appropriate request, but again, if that's the will of the council, to table this action to slow down the economic development, economic development agreement, I guess that's what we can do.
Aren't you asking for a seven-year tax abatement?
The company is, that's correct, yes.
The company is, that's correct, the company is. So at least, the council, at least I'm asking, is you sit down with the local labor, the building trades, and see if you can attempt to come up with some sort of agreement, see what's gonna happen there at that facility.
So if we can't, then what will happen to the development agreement?
That's a decision we'll have to make on the twenty-third.
Okay. Again, it would have been nice had this come up prior to, on the floor, seven meetings into this process.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions? Or comments? There's a motion and a second on the floor to determine-
Just one comment I'd like to make, actually. This isn't directed at Mr. Kozinski, but I do absolutely agree with you that it is disappointing that this came up at the eleventh hour, but I also believe it is the will of the council. So I will do whatever I can to try to facilitate this meeting and get it as productive as possible in the meantime.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I guess I would be remiss if I didn't say this, Mr. Shalio. When I received the call today, I immediately called you and attempted to reach out to Representative Niskoski, Representative Taylor, and get clarification, and was extremely disappointed that this came up today. But I also have to say, this is not the first time. When, when, what I'm saying, not, not with this, not with this situation, but I've been around a lot longer than you have, and trust me when I tell you, it seems, this is not the, this is not the first time I've been disappointed that when something that's been discussed, okay, discussed, whether, discussed for, you know, a long period of time, two months, three months, two weeks, three weeks, and at the last moment, something comes up, so that's, that's how happens sometimes. So I share your, I share your sentiments. With that said, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Will you take the roll on that, or?
Whoa. Is that? Yep. Mr. Faal?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Table.
Rest. Yes, yes.
Mr. Tlande?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzraik?
Just to point for a patient, it's not a cable.
It's returned to committee.
Return to committee until our committee meeting.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tanzraik, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to two.
Let the record show that the motion to return to committee until our committee meeting was passed by a vote of seven to two. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number seventy-two eighteen?
Resolution of the San Francisco County Council calling on the United States President Donald Trump, Vice President Pence, and the Indiana Congressional Senatorial Delegation to represent our area to work with Honeywell to stop off-shoring jobs and abandoning commitments made to retirees. Petitioner, Dinah.
Before I read the resolution, I just want to say this resolution is to support the workers and retirees in our community who have given their efforts for the Honeywell Corporation, and I will go about reading the resolution now. So the resolution, the St. Joseph County Council, calling on United States President Donald Trump, Vice President Mike Pence, and the Indiana Congressional Senatorial Delegation who represent our area to work with Honeywell to stop off-shoring jobs and abandoning commitments made to retirees. Whereas the Honorable United States President Donald Trump can encourage federal contractors to stop off-shoring jobs and to fill their commitments to retirees, and whereas Vice President Pence, as former governor and a native son of the state of Indiana, has a particular awareness and commitment to honoring commitments to and securing good jobs for Hoosier families. And whereas our United States Congressional Senatorial Delegation, who represent our area in Indiana, are the Honorable United States Congresswoman Jackie R. Walorsky, Indiana too, the Honorable United States Senator Joseph S. Donnelly, Senior, and the Honorable United States Senator Todd C. Young. And whereas Honeywell is a corporation with deep roots and a long history as a valued employer in our community, and whereas Honeywell, a defense contractor that has received three-point-four billion dollars in federal contracts from the Trump administration, is shipping work from the South Bend plant to Turkey, which runs counter to the commitment to keep jobs in the United States. And whereas Honeywell has elected to end its longstanding commitment to provide health care coverage to forty-seven-hundred retirees from this facility, and whereas these most recent actions come after Honeywell forced its workforce onto the street in a ten-month lockout in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, and whereas Honeywell collected one-point-seven billion dollars in two thousand seventeen profit, and takes advantage of the new tax law to bring back seven billion dollars in offshore case, and whereas it is our hope that true to its history as a good corporate citizen, Honeywell will always consider people over profit, and whereas Honeywell, while eliminating promised health care coverage to its retirees, deployed nearly nine-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in the first quarter for stock buybacks to boost shareholder profit instead of making good on its commitment to retirees' health care. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph Council, County Council, that the St. Joseph County Council respectfully requests that Representative Walorsky, Senator Donnelly, Senator Young, and Vice President Mike Pence call on President Trump to exercise his power and influence to encourage federal contractor Honeywell to, one, stop the off-shoring of South Bend area jobs, and, two, live up to its obligations to its employees, past and current, particularly in regard to health care benefits. The St. Joseph County Council additionally asks that in consideration of future contracts and renewals, President Trump take into consideration the actions of Honeywell with respect to its commitments to the people of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Hess? Hearing none. May I have a motion on bill number seventy-two eighteen?
Question approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, bill number seventy-two eighteen, was made by Councilman McHale, seconded by Councilman Patanjirai. Any further comments on seventy-two eighteen?
My comment is, is along these lines. I think we've got to be very careful as a county council in entering into private disputes between people in our community. I also think that mentioning the cesspool in Washington and how it might affect all this doesn't us do us any good, so I think that we have to be very careful that we don't become partisan and start going down that road. Having said that, I've worked with unions all my life. I've spent many at midnight hour and many at early morning hour working with unions, and so it might appear that if I voted against this, I am not in favor of unions, so therefore I vote for it. But I don't think this should be a practice that we, we get involved in private disputes in the county that would rent.
Any other comments from any council member on seventy-two eighteen?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Patanjirai?
Somewhat similar to what Mr. Faal said, but in contrast, I would agree that we don't regularly get in disputes with private companies and contract disputes with their employees. However, when something impacts four-thousand-seven-hundred retirees in our community, people that have given their life working for Honeywell, and something as big as this can impact them, it's retirees, I don't think it's that difficult of a thing to ask our congressional delegation, our president, to step in and try and do something to help save the retirees' benefits. I've said this before publicly, and I think the council knows, my dad's a UAW retiree out of Detroit, before motor company, and he enjoys those benefits today. He's almost ninety years old, and thank God for his health insurance. So I hate to see that happen to our UAW employees here, already workforce, who counted on that when they went to retire and had the benefits for them five, ten, fifteen, twenty years after they retired, something that they anticipated and were hoping to enjoy the rest of their life. So I don't think it's difficult, or I don't think it's a tough position for a state as a council to intervene in something that's, that's kind of negative. And again, I would agree, we don't do it on a regular basis, and very infrequently do we do this as a council, but in this situation, I think it's appropriate that we do.
Any further comments? Mr. Kozinski?
This is a clarification. I realize this is a real resolution, but-
It's a ceremonial resolution that has no legal effect.
-there's probably some UAW workers that would like to speak, but that probably would be under public comments at the end.
Mr. Treble?
Yes.
At the end?
It's a ceremonial resolution, has no legal effect, so we would normally not hear a public hearing on such a resolution, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Hess?
Well, since they're unable, unable to speak right now, let me speak a bit on their behalf. I've been meeting with them, listening to them, working with them for the last few months, and I just heard again on Saturday that there are people literally dying because they've lost their health care coverage within the last few months. They're unable to find coverage they can afford or navigate the new confused health system that exists in our country today. So I see this less of a dispute between a company and workers than a public health issue related to good-paying jobs in our community and access to quality health care, and we're, they're being denied, forty-seven-hundred retirees or widows or widowers of retirees anticipating this. We're talking people eighty, ninety, ninety-five years old that are losing their health care coverage unexpectedly, and it's a lot to digest. And again, people are literally dying because of- And it's a lot to digest. And again, people are literally dying because of this. And again, we have a defense contractor talking about offshoring jobs to Turkey. So that's my speech on behalf of the Honeywell workers.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Mr. Morton, just, if I can make a comment. My father, my late father-in-law was a UAW. Back then Bendix Honeywell employee for quite a few years, and passed away a couple of years after his retirement. And this has affected my mother-in-law because she has, which Mrs. Smysl and I have coffee over this a couple of times, it's affected her health insurance. So I, I attest to what Mr. Kandzry and Ms. Hess says in regards to the concern of the forty-seven hundred retirees in our community with their time and effort and lives into this city and their confidence.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on seventy-two eighteen? Ms. Kandzry?
I know everybody spoke, and I know it's only a ceremonial resolution of going to our local council. But I would also, if there are people here in the audience that are not in favor of us doing this, I would like to hear from those who would not want us to do this in the council, or those who wouldn't want to do it. So I would make a motion that we amend our rules for this one resolution tonight and ask if, ask for a public hearing in terms of those in favor and those against, at least if, at least if she'll handle it. If we couldn't do that.
It's up to you. It's up to the chair, of course.
Okay, well, I'm hearing if this has to be unanimous to change the rules, so I guess we'll take a vote.
Certainly could.
Want to go do the roll? So we have a motion, do we have a second to amend, okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'll read you guys' orders and where we are. So Ms. Hess? Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Washington, sorry, you already said yes, so you're on the hook. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzry?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shiskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
So the motion to suspend the rules, it carries nine to zero. Should I open a public hearing?
Certainly can.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of resolution seventy-two eighteen? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Thomas L. Smysl Senior, fifty-one oh forty-two Prairie View, A.S., South Bend, Indiana. Presently, over the last eight or nine years, been retiree chairman from UAW Local Nine here in South Bend, Indiana, and basically me myself pretty much representing these retirees that have lost their health insurance. I just would like to say that I think it was pretty much proven by the city council that it was not a partisan issue. It's not partisan. These workers, these retirees, whether they losing their jobs through, were going to Turkey, or whether they're losing their insurance as a retiree, have voted some Republican, some Democrat. So I would not call this a partisan issue. When you, when you lose your benefits and you lose your job, I don't think there's anything partisan about that whatsoever. Honeywell has betrayed the retirees and the workers at this corporation, the South Bend. And I think this is a lesson that you all ought to look at, to see when you do give tax breaks and you do do favor for corporations in this community, that they live up to some type of standard and take care of the working people that they employ. They give thirty, forty, fifty years of their life for a corporation. A lot of these people that don't have health insurance now, or can't afford to buy it, or are paying a lot of money for it. We've got people that are under sixty-five, it's three to five thousand dollars a month. We've got people that are over sixty-five, it's five, four, five hundred dollars a month. And it is not nowhere near the type of coverage that we did have. Because that was one of the best coverages that, that we could buy in this country, is not buy, but what Honeywell gave us. So it's, it's really, it's a hardship, it's our jobs are lost, our community's affected, our economy is hit hard because the money that we could spend in this community is no longer there. A lot of it's going to be gone because it's going to have to go out and buy health coverage. I've had people come to me that are under sixty-five years old and say, there is no way that I can buy health coverage now. They asked these people to retire and told them if they didn't retire before sixty, before the last contract in two thousand sixteen, that they could lose their coverage if they didn't retire prior to the contract. So a lot of these people under sixty-five went ahead and retired and then lost their health insurance anyway. They could have kept working if they would have known this. Our economy is hit hard, our retirees are affected by thousands of dollars out of their pockets. Our hardships for the elderly and members under sixty-five and, and, and over sixty-five. Like I said, it's not a partisan issue, and I appreciate Diane bringing this up today for a resolution. And I would hope that you'd go along with the South Bend Common Council and vote in favor of it. We've got Larry that'll speak next, and he, he is going around, Good Jobs Nation, is going around to, to Trump, President Trump's, and we're, we're not protesters, we're just asking him to live up to the promises he made. And we want him to take a look at the why we are taking military federal contracts and sending them overseas and taking the benefits away from retirees. That's all we ask. Did you take a look at this? I would appreciate any help we could get from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir, could you please sign in? Please state your name and address for the record, so we have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Larry Alexander, L.A.R.R.Y.A.L.E.X.A.N.D.E.R., from Mishwak, Indiana. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time, and I can present my side of the case, if you would. We, back in two thousand sixteen, when Honeywell locked our people out, contract negotiations, they didn't want to talk about it. So they were locked out. We tried several attempts to get a hold of our Congresswoman and our senators to give us some help. We had people that, they were out for ten months. And we were doing everything we could do to keep food on their tables and help them get through this. In, in past, we've had contracts, we just extended the contracts out, but they took my way, the highway, and that's, that was their attitude all the way through the ten months. Now, I'm a second-generation Bendix worker, and it'll always be Bendix as far as I'm concerned. I've worked there for thirty-seven years with the promise that when I retired, I would be taking, health care would be taken care of me for the rest of my life, and my spouse. And lo and behold, I retire and they take it away from me. Now I'm forced to spend four to five thousand of my pension money to provide health care for my wife and myself. And that isn't fair, when I was promised thirty-seven years ago that I wouldn't have to worry about that. And now I got that, and I could be spending that money in our community. Instead of the insurance companies and, and medical people, they're, they're swimming in money, and nobody can convince me otherwise. The prices that they're charging for their prescriptions and stuff isn't fair to the little guy. And all I'm asking, and my second part is, taking the work offshore. And a real short story, I'm sure you all remember Congressman John Bradamas. Back in the seventies, the Bendix Corporation, and they were compassionate people, don't get me wrong. My, I died, or my father died, I was a month and a day old. And Bendix come out and offered my mother a job, and there was eight of us kids. She lived in country, didn't drive, so unfortunately she couldn't take the job, but the offer was there. So now Bendy, or Honeywell, they choose now on these tax breaks to take and buy back stock for a fraction of what they bought back in stock. They could have picked up our health care benefits, drop in the bucket compared, but no, they wanted to make themselves fatter and make us still suffer. And my problem with them jobs going offshore is our taxpayer money is, is being paid to make these products for the defense of our country. When these jobs go out of country, and, and one of them's going to Turkey, who's to say that they'll sell this technology to Russia, China, anybody that's got the money? And then they turn around and use it back on us. And that isn't fair. That's not fair to the taxpayers, because that's our money. And to say, I'm getting back to Bradamas, and I'm going to shut up. But getting back to Mr. Bradamas, Bendix thought that. They said, okay, contract, things weren't going good. And Bendix people said, well, we'll just move out of town and close shop. And fortunately, the president of our Local Nine, Mr. Burkis, got a hold of Mr. Bradamas and told him the situation. Mr. Bradamas got a hold of Bendix people, they had a meeting, and Mr. Bradamas said this. I can't tell you where you run your business, how to run your business, but he said, I'm here to tell you right now that as long as you've got government contracts, that work will be done in South Bend, Indiana. If you do it, or somebody else will, but he said, I guarantee that work will be done in South Bend, Indiana, if you do it or anybody else. And two days, we were back to work and everything was happy. So the only thing I'm asking, we had the South Bend Common Council pass the resolution, and all we're asking you folks is to diligently, diligently, when Honeywell, if they want to be a good corporate citizen of this town and this county, to hold them liable for, when they went these tax breaks, make them live up to the commitments they're making. We found out, one, that they didn't live up, they said they hired two hundred and some people, I think it was ended up being thirty-seven people, and some other things that got involved in it. All we're asking is to hold them accountable. And as Good Jobs Nation, we, we went the letter route to the president, the congressman and everything, no answer, no answer, no answer. So we took it upon ourself, and it's going across the country, we're following President Trump around the country. Been to Evansville, been to Minnesota, Willing, West Virginia, I'm going to Erie, Pennsylvania, Wednesday, tomorrow. And we're catching up to these people, and they recognize we're here. And in Minnesota, we caught up to Mr. Trump's campaign manager, twenty twenty, and he took the resolution. I'm taking a copy of our resolution from the city council, and I'd really much appreciate if I could get a copy of your resolution to take with me to, to tell Mr. Trump, he has the authority to tell, hold these companies liable and fine them, penalize them, like he said, he would penalize any, taking any jobs offshore.
Sir?
Just live up to your, your word.
I'd like to let you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I thank you for your time and appreciate anything you folks can do for us, because we're hurting. Thank you.
If you could please limit your comments to three minutes and follow our protocol, I would really appreciate it.
Tony Flora, two oh two East Angeles, South Bend, president of the AFL-CIO Council, and we have been supporting the UAW Local Nine retirees and Honeywell workers in this struggle. Much has been said, I don't need to repeat anything, but I did want to rise and speak to something that Mr. File raised, and also Mr. Kandzry raised, about the nature of what this, what this resolution is doing. And to give it some context, we believe that what's happened is that our country has gone off the rails. There used to be a time when we felt that an employer or a firm that had a special compact with our communities because it was serving the nation. Larry spoke about the days when, when Bendix was a defense contractor. And there was a general political sense that, that because you were in a special relationship with our national government, you owed something to our community. And for decades, we saw defense contractors of ways in which we built communities. During World War Two, defense contractors became an important place in which our workforce became integrated because we felt that was good policy, and because you were a defense contractor, you owed us something as a nation. And what we find appalling is that Honeywell seems to have no concern with that at all, which is why this issue has been raised. So Mr. File, you did raise a question whether or not this was a private dispute. We're saying no. On the other hand, it's very much a public dispute. It's something that affects a community and our nation, which is why this is being addressed to President Trump. Because as president, he could indeed say through an executive order that defense contractors should do the following. And in fact, Senator Donnelly raised this issue when the Defense Authorization Bill was on the floor in the Senate in June. And he did achieve an amendment to that bill in which this has to be studied, whether or not a defense contractor can move this kind of work out of the country. So it is an important public question, but one part that wasn't addressed was the retirees. And I do think it's something to consider, that Mayor Pete Buttigieg made a remark at one of our rallies when he learned that a large part of the tax cut that Honeywell received was used for stock buybacks, which clearly shows that there is no pressing economic need for that company to have ended the health insurance for retirees, people who received health insurance from that firm or its predecessors for fifty years. So this is a public issue, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of bill seventy-two eighteen? Is there anyone, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of seventy-two eighteen? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on seventy-two eighteen. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, all in favor, motion by sixty-five, I say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let the record show that bill number seventy-two eighteen was passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we have the final adoption on the airport authority, solid waste management, and the St. Joe County twenty nineteen budget. Clark, will you please read bill number fifty-five eighteen?
Orders for appropriations and tax rates, budget for airport clear.
Do you have a motion on bill fifty-five eighteen?
Yeah, for both.
For the second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number fifty-five eighteen was passed by Councilman Kandzry. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on fifty-five eighteen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzry?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shiskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fifty-five eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clark, will you please read the next bill, bill number fifty-six eighteen?
Orders for appropriations and tax rates, budget for airport solid waste.
May I have a motion on bill number fifty-six eighteen? Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number fifty-six eighteen was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kuzinski. Any further comments on fifty-six eighteen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kandzry?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shiskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero. Let the record show that bill number fifty-six eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clark, will you please read the next bill, bill number fifty-seven eighteen?
In order to establish salaries and fixing numbers employed in St. Joseph County in the year twenty nineteen.
May I have a motion on bill number fifty-seven eighteen?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number fifty-seven eighteen was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further discussion on fifty-seven eighteen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shiskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzry?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fifty-seven eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clark, will you please read the next bill, bill number fifty-eight eighteen?
Fifty-eight eighteen, orders for appropriation of tax rates, motion for a first St. Joseph County.
May I have a motion on bill number fifty-eight eighteen?
Move for press.
There's a second. Motion to pass bill number fifty-eight eighteen was made by Councilman Kandzry. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments by council on fifty-eight eighteen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shiskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes. No, I'm G.
What's G?
Emergency management.
Is that? So we're still on the, here's all your advocates, next one to the train. Okay, that's our. Mr. Kandzry?
Yes.
And Ms. McHale?
Aye.
And Mr. Root? And our gentleman, Mr. Morton, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fifty-eight eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, public hearing, public comment. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issues on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clark, will you please read bill number sixty-eight eighteen? Could we please read Bill number 6818?
Orders for appropriate and transfer of money for the purpose herein specified for the seven departments here in this city.
May I have a motion on 6818? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number 6818 was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Hess. Any further comments on the council number on 6818? Hearing none, could we please take the roll?
Mr. Kraszewski?
Yes.
And Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes, except for G.
Got it. Mr. Kanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kaio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Aye.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero, the section of the county has 52-G.
Let the record show that Bill number 6818 was passed by a vote of nine to zero, except for item G, which was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next on the agenda is land planning. Could we please read Bill number 5318?
Orders made in supplementing title 15-9, he's checking 154 planning, he's owning the San Jose County property located at 51191 Cherry Road from our single family district to OB Office Buffer District, petitioner Daphne Gallagher.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please, sir.
President, Bill number 53-18 comes before council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Jordan Wyatt with the Area Plan Commission, offices on 11th floor of this building. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the area, outlined in red on the screen, from our single family district to OB Office Buffer District. To the north and west, our single family homes zone are single family district. To the south is a funeral home, zone B business district. To the east is a business, zone B business district. This is the view of the property as it accesses Cherry Road. Here's a view of the property looking southwest on State Road 23. Here's the property with its access to State Road 23. The site plan shows a single family home with a portion of it being used for the office with the expansion of a parking lot and an exit-only access to Cherry Road. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, subject to the rent commitment that the access to Cherry Road be exit-only. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner is here as well.
Any questions for Council, or petition?
Thank you. Mike Danche from Danche Harner and Associates, 1643 Comishriff here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. As we had told council, what we're asking for is to rezone the existing home that's on the northwest corner of Cherry and 23 to the OB. The owner, Daphne Gallagher, actually lives in the home right now. When she had purchased the house back in 2016, she had been told that she could actually run the business out of this house. When she found out she couldn't, we were contacted to go through the rezoning procedure, so what you're seeing is that request to allow for the lower level of the home to be used for State Farm Insurance Agency. We had been working with the staff on the access, and along with Jessica Clark, we agreed to the written commitment that the access onto Cherry Road would be an exit-only. And what we would ask council for is a favorable on the rezoning to the OB. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from council for the petitioner?
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 5318. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the... Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 5318, do I hear a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nolan?
I'd like to... Mr. File, just... Comments or thoughts on this?
Any other comments, council?
You said favorable.
Do you have a motion?
I will make it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion to pass Bill number 5318 was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman File. Any further council discussion on 5318? Hearing none, could we please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kaio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 5318 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Could we please read the next bill, Bill number 6218?
The resolution determined that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number R-5-18 of the San Jose County Council, declaring an area of San Jose County an economic revitalization area. Confirming resolution. Petitioner, Abtrax Industries.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 62-18 comes before the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Shalio.
Good evening, Bill. Shalio Economic Development here before you today for the confirming resolution for Abtrax Industries located at 59640 Market Street in South Bend. That's southwest of the city limits of the city of South Bend. Abtrax is a local business headquartered here in the San Joe County. Been here for a number of years. They had an industrial accident at the end of last year that's caused them to do an unplanned building construction. The building where they had a piece of equipment was destroyed. They have since removed the building from the site, settled all their insurance matters, and now are seeking to get this building under construction. As a result of not having these activities on site, they had to reduce their current workforce, so the need to do this is very pressing, and so they would like to move forward with the construction. Their schedule works out for a seven-year real property tax abatement and a five-year personal property tax abatement. We have previously had the numbers before you as part of all of the agreements, but if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them. There is a representative here from the company if there's any questions for him.
Any questions from council for either Mr. Shalio or the representative from Abtrax? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 6218. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill number 6218. Do I hear a motion?
If you're standing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 6218 was made by Councilman Tannen, it was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments on this bill? Hearing none, could we please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kaio?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 6218 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Could we please read the next bill, Bill number 6318?
The resolution determined that the qualifications for economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number R-13-18 of the San Jose County Council declaring an area of San Jose County to be an economic revitalization area. Confirming resolution, petitioner SF Motors.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 63-18 comes before the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shalio?
Members of the council, we're before you today to talk about the confirming resolution for SF Motors. This is for a personal property tax abatement, only for a period of seven years. As part of the tax abatement, the petitioner is seeking to invest $20 million between now and March 31, 2019. As part of that commitment, they would hire up to 100 workers that would be working on site by March 31, 2019. I believe when they were here two weeks ago, they were already in the 70s number, as far as number of employees on site, so they would seek to continue to grow as they move forward. If there's any questions about this tax abatement, I would be happy to answer them. As there is also a representative here from the company, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions from council for Mr. Shalio or the representative from SF Motors? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 6318. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 6318. May I have a motion?
For a second.
Motion to pass Bill number 6318 was made by Councilman Nolan, and it was seconded by Councilman Kanzarite. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, could we please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kaio?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 6318 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Could we please read the next bill, Bill number 6518?
Orders for petitioner for special use, filed by Century Builders Inc., located at lots 3 and 4 of Stroud's Minor Subdivision, petitioner Century Builders.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 63-18 comes before the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission with offices located on 11th floor of this building. The petitioner, Century Builders, owns two lots here on Cherry, just up the street from the rezoning we discussed. This is a section of Cherry that's between 23 and Adams Road. They would like to, under our single family district, get a special use for a four-unit dwelling on each of those lots. It was a wooded lot at one point, and it has been cleared since that was taken, so they... You can see here, this would be two lots. Each would have a four-unit townhome-style building on the lot. This comes to you from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation. There were a couple conditions discussed with the petitioner which they have agreed to, and I would recommend that be carried forward by the council this evening. Those conditions include installing a sidewalk across the front of their property, installing landscape screening on the east boundary, and making the front facades on the west look like a front of a building, so that there's not a blank wall facing the street. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Petitioner, I'm sorry. Mr. Kanzarite?
Well, you mentioned sidewalks, I'm not... I know the area, I don't know specifically. Granger Pass Trail up there?
It's just north on Adams. So there's a sidewalk that comes along the north side of 23, and then there's the Granger Path along Adams. So this would not be a long extension, and we would hope that at some point in the future the Granger Path can kind of help connect that, but it would be a great connection for the property.
How much of a connection is it? Would it be a lengthwise estimate?
Um, for them or...
For them, if this property wouldn't connect up to the Granger Pass?
We're not requesting that they connect it all the way across their prop... Or all the way to the path, but I'm not sure what that distance is. There's one more property to the north and one property to the south. So there's only two other property owners in this section. Ms. Clark from the engineering office had suggested they could build it to a narrower width now, as long as they leave enough room that in the future, when that was expanded, they could connect that through. If they would like to work with the adjacent properties to extend it now, we'd be happy to let them make that connection.
Maybe we'll see if they can do that. Thank you. Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi. Mike Huber with Ammarch Consultants, 750 Lincoln Way East, South Bend. As mentioned, we are looking for the special use to allow us to do the project. We're good with the commitments that we made prior to tonight. I know the sidewalk. I think we'd be willing to take the idea of connecting to the paths and working with the neighboring property owners back to our client. I can't commit to that tonight because our client's not here, but we're definitely willing to open that discussion and have that conversation about making those commitments. We're about connectivity, so...
I have a bit of a... I have a bit of a take, which is going to be a unique project if it gets passed tonight, and connectivity to bring your walkable and connected.
Agreed. We're definitely open to the conversation.
Do you have a question for the petitioner? Thank you. Now, open the public hearing on Bill number 6518. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Please state your name of guest for the record, sir. You have three minutes for a guest to counsel.
Zachary Deluski, 13370 Adams Road. There's no properties like this in this direct area. It is also increasing kind of a commercial residential area into Granger. There's schools directly north of this property. And again, there's no multifamily dwellings in Harris Township that I'm aware of, so I would recommend that the council does not pass for the special use in... To preserve the property values of the surrounding homeowners and as well as the residential feel of this area.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 6518? Hearing none. The petitioner has an opportunity to rebut. Any comments that the gentleman just made in opposition?
We were granted the approvals at the BZA level and at the committee meeting level. We feel like we're bringing a really unique product. We don't think it's injurious to the surrounding neighbors. I think it's a compliment to the neighborhood, so I think we're asking that you do support our petition. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it. I'll close the public hearing on 6518. Do I hear a motion on the bill? Mr. Nolan?
I'd like to hear Mr. Files, in his favor, this being in his district.
Okay.
A motion to pass Bill number 6518 was made by Mr. File, Councilman File. Do I hear a second? A motion to pass Bill number 6518 was made by Councilman File. Do I hear a second? A motion to pass was made by Councilman File, it was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments on 6518? Hearing none, could we please take the roll?
Mr. Kanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kaio?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's line to zero.
Let the record show that Bill number sixty-five eighteen is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is unfinished business. Next is new business. Under new business, we have an acceptance of the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement by Mr. Corey Nolan. Any questions on that statement? Here. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it is accepted. At this point, we're going to hear from Mr. Daniel Collins from InFocus. Would you vote? I'm sorry. Mr. Collins, before you get started, I apologize. Mr. Nolan would like to comment on his statement. I apologize, sir.
No problem. I believe this, the way I view it, is it's supposed to be passed at a public meeting. So, I got this presented here, as you guys will see here, just for all of it. Clarity and transparency possible there is because my real job, my real person job, that I'm swagging, we are doing parts and pieces of this here in the energy saves projects and the lighting of this building. And potentially, if everything worked out perfect, it could impact my income to a little level you see there. So, I'll let you envision that, and let's take a further process in this aspect. And Mr. Wilson's dead tester, at the committee meetings where we're approving the invoices. Because we're a sub of a sub, after they're actually going to see what they're like, so I'm not worried about any of those approvals or things. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Nolan just made a comment in regards to, is income good or is it shared or not?
That would be a different conflict because there's someone that you would ask that.
Mr. Tony.
Are you disclosing, making a disclosure because you're a shareholder in the company or because you're an employee?
Actually, the reason for the disclosure is because I'm on this council.
If you were just, if you were on the council and just an employee, it would be a concept. Or, not a concept, but a part of the disclosure.
That is upwards of eight, but I would find out because there was questions about whether or not this is the one.
Any other questions for Mr. Nolan?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Tanzright, I just want to tell them thank you for disclosing that. I think transparency at its best, and keep in mind what potentially, you could have a conflict with that in a city. You're being transparent. I think it's good for the voters, but you have a very small interest in performance services. I think the profit that you listed here, to me, far, is much less profitable than the impact you're going to save us in the county in terms of the money we're going to save, in terms of our expenditure and carbon footprint. Thank you for what you do.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Collins, Director of Operations at InFocus, six-three-five Zedlaff Boulevard. Thank you for inviting me here this evening to share the work that we've completed over the past two years. I'll keep this as a short presentation, so this is really just some of the key findings. The county contracted our organization, InFocus, two years ago to investigate the accuracy and fairness of property assessments across St. Joseph County and Penn Township. So, we've been working very closely with the Penn Township assessor and the St. Joseph County assessor over the past two years. And I'll dive right into some of the findings. Okay, so during the first year, which was kind of the first part of this engagement, some of the key findings were that the accuracy and fairness of property assessments fall within the guidelines of the Indiana Department of Local Government and Finance. But in comparison to other Indiana counties, there is significant room for improvement at St. Joseph County. So, I've got some figures about gross assessed value later, but when you convert that into potential tax revenue, it looks like there may be up to eleven million dollars per year in tax revenue missing across all taxing districts in St. Joseph County and taxing units. So, that would be the libraries, the schools, the counties, the cities, et cetera. So, during that first year, InFocus identified quite a number of land value errors. Some of those were software errors, some of those were human errors. And in total, they added up to about five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars per year in missing tax revenue. Another key finding was that the county, St. Joseph County, does not trend commercial properties, and that the last land study was in two thousand and twelve. And those two things in combination really have the effect of keeping commercial assessments quite low. Another thing was that neighborhoods were established in the nineteen nineties, and although they've been adjusted frequently since then, there hasn't really been a comprehensive review. And this was very obvious when looking at the neighborhood structures and delineations. So, since the end of that engagement, there's been some action taken by the two assessors' offices. So, those land value errors that we identified have both been resolved by St. Joseph County and by Penn Township. Penn Township contracted TMA, or Tax Management Associates, to audit personal property, which is the equipment within buildings owned by businesses. St. Joseph County is in the process right now of completing a new land study, which will also help to address a lot of the issues we identified. And St. Joseph County has told us that towards the end of this year, they intend to carry out that comprehensive review of all neighborhoods. So, like I said, that hasn't happened since the nineteen nineties. And we think that's a very good thing, that they're going to be carrying out that review. So, just when I talk about accuracy and fairness, this isn't a subjective topic. This is very objective. It is measured every year by the Indiana Department of Local Government and Finance. So, when we say the assessments here are less accurate and less fair than other counties, that is as measured by the state. It's not put out in the most accessible format, but when we compile it, you end up with these kind of numbers here. So, for example, the accuracy is just a measure of the assessed value of properties over the sale price. And ideally, those should match up. The assessed value should be matching up with the market value. Your target is basically a one-hundred percent. Comparable counties for residential and commercial are shown there. They might achieve ninety-six-point-eight percent or ninety-five-point-seven percent. Then you see St. Joseph County at ninety-five-point-three percent, or in the case of commercial, at ninety-point-eight percent, which is just above the state allowed minimum of ninety percent. So, the accuracy is very closely related to the missing tax revenue that we're talking about. So, if your properties are typically only assessed at ninety-five percent of their value, then in this county, when we multiply that by the total available gross assessed value, that missing five percent comes to about five-hundred-and-three million dollars in gross assessed value for residential, and about three-hundred-and-three million dollars in gross assessed value for commercial. And from that, we calculated the eleven million dollars in missing tax revenue. So, just if you're wondering where those figures came from. On the fairness side, once again, there's another way of measuring this. And as you can see, other counties in Indiana typically outperform St. Joseph County on this measure as well. So, the effect here is that although a lot of properties are under assessed, there are some properties that are also over assessed, and that's kind of related to the fairness metric there. So, this past year, just kind of an overview of some of the activities we went through. We really focused on residential assessments in particular, and just went through several years of historical data, analyzing that, looking for trends. We also facilitated an engagement between the county and the University of Notre Dame. The University of Notre Dame completed this at no cost to the county. They treated it as a research project, and they just explored some of the different methods that could be used to increase accuracy and increase fairness. We looked at the technology used by the county. We visited some of the top-performing assessors' offices around Indiana, so other counties, and spent time with them to talk about some best practices and the technology that they're using and things like that. We looked at organizational strength and how to set up your assessor's office for success. And then the St. Joseph County assessor requested some research into some other areas, such as TIF districts and common areas and things like that. So, I'm just going to run through, I think it's maybe four or so of our key findings. The first one is the personal property update. So, once again, this is the equipment owned by businesses, kitchen equipment, manufacturing equipment, things like that. It has been a long time, decades, and in some cases, it just hasn't happened, that townships in this county have audited personal property, which is a self-reported tax or assessed value. So, the Penn Township assessor, assuming that it would be a good idea to carry out an audit, contracted Tax Management Associates for an audit of personal property at Penn Township. It runs over a three-year period, and they're one year into it now. And as we had stated last year, we had put forward some suggestions last year that said you would probably discover roughly about twenty-five percent to thirty percent of businesses were probably underreporting or incorrectly reporting their personal property. And so far, one year into the study, that is exactly the case. Twenty-seven percent of businesses are incorrect, have been incorrectly reporting their personal property value. So, Penn Township is continuing with the study, and there is additional tax revenue coming in right now through that. We think that by the end of Penn Township's audit, that will amount to about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars per year in tax revenue that wasn't being collected before. The St. Joseph County assessor has not contracted TMA, but I suppose our recommendation here is that they do. You're almost certainly going to find exactly the same findings across the county, as you will in Penn Township, because it has also been decades since a personal property audit. So, if you project out the tax revenue for that, that is probably about a million dollars per year in missing tax revenue across the county. So, one of the other things we did was, like I said, technology analysis. And just one of the findings from that is really just comparing the main system that the county uses for computer-assisted mass appraisal. And the county uses a kind of combination of different systems for some of these functions, ProVal, iDocs, AS2. It costs the county about two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars per year. What we've noticed is that over the past ten years, about sixty-three Indiana counties have switched to another vendor called Xoft and are using their InCalma product. The prices that we found for that actually come in lower than what the county is currently spending. It also looks like, in our opinion, a much better system in terms of requiring less duplication, less interfaces, being, we would say, more user-friendly, and things like that. Also, the implementation is relatively straightforward. We talked with other counties, and the counties that we talked to that had switched to this software system gave it very good reviews. So, I think our recommendation to the two assessors was, we facilitated a demo, and the vendor kind of came in and showed what the product is all about. But our recommendation would be for the assessor to continue talking with Xoft or with other vendors just to investigate alternative technologies, which could really improve the productivity and the efficiency of both offices. So, I think one of our main findings was this topic of trending. And if you're not familiar with it, trending is the process of adjusting assessed values for properties on an annual basis to bring them closer to market value. And I think one of our main findings here was that St. Joseph County trends less residential properties each year than other counties. So, for example, they trend approximately twenty percent of the properties in the county compared to Elkhart next door would trend eighty-four percent. So, what is the approach here? The approach here is to wait for those values to fall below a particular threshold. It tends to be about ninety percent, often even eighty-five percent. So, properties are falling to eighty-five or ninety percent of their market value before this county actually trends them. Most other counties do not do that. As soon as a property falls slightly below its market value, they're adjusted back up to the market value. So, what we're seeing here are very large changes to a small number of properties every year. So, twenty percent of properties might receive a fifteen percent increase in their assessed value. That would be a very typical scenario versus in Elkhart. You might see eighty-four percent of properties get a three or four percent increase, so a small increase. And we think this is also closely related to the number of appeals this county gets. There are a huge number of appeals filed every year in this county relative to other counties. So, we've kind of compared it to the four counties we visited there, just as an example, and you can see it's maybe three or four times as many. And we think that's very closely related to the fact that the properties are being bumped up by a large amount just every few years. And when we talked about the missing five-hundred-million dollars in residential value, this is where it comes from. So, something we did, when I talked about investigating historical residential assessment data, we actually took the county's data over the past several years and put it into the models that other counties are using to see if it would increase accuracy and fairness. And the finding there was that, yes, it does. It increases both accuracy and fairness if you assess properties in the same way that most other counties are assessing them. So, I think, just next two slides are kind of summarizing some of this. There's a variety of different things that could be completed. In fact, there's dozens of different things that could be completed to increase accuracy and fairness at the county here. But I suppose what we wanted to do was break it down into things that would actually create the largest impact with the least amount of effort. So, the personal property audit, for example, you know, is very simple. It's a vendor, they're only paid out of what they find, so there's no financial risk to the county there. And there isn't really any burden on the assessor's office in terms of time or effort. The more frequent trending of residential properties. This isn't really a lack of resources or anything like this. This is more of a policy decision, and once again, could be very easily addressed through a change of policy at the county. You know, technology improvements might require a little more effort, but would probably have a large impact. More frequent land studies, like I said, the assessor's office is carrying out another land study this year, and it's been quite a while since there was one. We would recommend that they carry out a land study every two years, which would be more in line with what other counties are doing, rather than waiting six or ten years, because you're missing assessed value in the meantime. And then there are other things that are very high effort, you know, like the comprehensive neighborhood review, and that you kind of do need extra time and resources for. So, in summary, you know, the Department of Local Governance and Finance releases ratio studies every year. It shows quite clearly that there's room to improve the accuracy and fairness of property assessments at both St. Joseph County and Penn Township. Although they do fall within the guidelines, they do not compare well to other counties, and that really results in probably about eleven million dollars per year in tax revenue that might be missing across all taxing districts. There's a variety of solutions and strategies available to address this, but there are just a few here that we would really recommend in terms of, you know, low effort but high impact. And maybe once those are achieved, the county could look at some of the other potential solutions as well. So, thank you for your time, and I would say if there's any questions, please go ahead.
Mr. Collins, what would you say the feedback has been, or the attitude towards that changing of assessing every other year like other counties that you made reference to?
The more frequent land studies.
Not the more frequent.
Yeah.
About the trending of neighborhoods? Yes. Have you gotten any feedback from the assessor on willingness to adapt to that?
Yeah, so I think those are two things. So, the more frequent trending, I think the county assessor seemed to agree with our analysis or didn't find any issue with it, but felt that they currently have other projects that they are working on and would consider this in the future, but I don't think there's been any commitment.
What's the definition of the future?
I don't know. So, yeah, there wasn't any clear commitment to pursue that. In terms of the more frequent land studies, so the first topic there probably has the larger impact. The land studies are also very, more frequent ones would be very good, probably not as high impact. But the reception to that was very positive. I think the plan probably is, though I would leave it to the county assessor to confirm this, the plan probably is to do much more frequent land studies, probably in the region of every two years.
With TMA, there's no commitment to that yet?
TMA, I know that the county assessor has been in contact with TMA, and I don't know what the latest is on those communications, but I think they're talking.
Mr. Nolan.
I would go so far as to say that our, some comedian happens to be able to say that there was a commitment from the assessor to pursue that, but wasn't a timeframe. The commitment was made, they will do that.
You're still waiting on, you know, there's, they're trying to.
Yeah, I get my cam in Central County Auditorium Office on the second floor. So, we're still waiting on some concrete steps to be taken. It seems that at this juncture, I think it was with, there were to be negotiations between her attorney, Frank Augustina, and the TMA, and Jamie Woods, and we just haven't seen anything yet, so still waiting.
I guess what I was actually getting at was, would you agree with what you said?
I do agree with you, I do agree with you that there seemed to be an acknowledgement on behalf of the Central County assessor that this would be a good, you know, a good way to go. We just haven't seen any action yet.
Okay, and then the follow-up to that is, at the same meeting, especially with the health, Xoft come back in second time. Should we show and tell again? Does that happen?
We tried to set that up, and we found some dates. I think none of those dates worked for the county assessor. So, she agreed to reach out to Xoft and set something up, but we haven't heard anything more about it. That was maybe two or three weeks ago. So, once again, kind of just waiting to see what action is taken there.
Okay.
Sort of sitting there, yeah.
You mentioned some other projects that the assessor was working on that prevented her from getting to the next steps.
Well, she referenced those. I don't know what those would be specifically.
Do you know?
No, I don't. I think she expressed that her staff are busy working on other projects, but this would be, in terms of more frequent trending for properties, would be something they'd consider in the future.
I got the impression...
Are there other projects or something that has to be done in order to put it in?
I'm not aware of that, and I can't speak for her, neither can Daniel, but the, my understanding of the TMA doesn't require any effort on behalf of the county assessor. You sign it, the commissioner sign a contract, and people start working, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't take up a lot of staff time, if any at all. I'm not certain, and Danny can speak to this too, this whole, this whole issue of doing the more frequent trending of the...
That's what I was...
I don't know that that would necessarily eat up a lot of staff time either. Correct me if I'm wrong, and Jack would probably, he's not here, could speak to that, but in terms of how that, how easy that was from a technological standpoint, I don't know that that was, required a lot more manpower to do. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's something that would probably require an extra few weeks, so not like an additional staff member or anything like that, but would require kind of maybe two or three weeks, I believe, to kind of go through and make sure you're doing it correctly. But I suppose compared to some of the other things, it is a pretty low time commitment.
Low time commitment, it's low-hanging fruit. There's a, you know, high, there's a great benefit to it, so it wouldn't, that's why he, when he made that, he put that chart together, it was had high impact, very low effort. Those two things are the most lowest-hanging fruit.
So there's no way for her to prioritize that over the kind of projects she's working on, I guess? Is there...
Well, you'd have, we couldn't get that, you know, I mean, you'd have to speak to her about that. I mean, it's something that, from my standpoint, from my position as auditor, and trying to make sure that we're, you know, we're engaging in a fair process here and we're realizing the requisite revenue, I think that in my personal, I would rather that we really made that a priority, since it's, you know, if we make that couple-week effort, because the benefits that will redound to us are pretty significant. Also, it will reduce the amount of appeals. I mean, you can see, I mean, we, you all get the complaints, I get the complaints, you know, where people's, inexplicably, they come in, I was like, what the heck happened? My property went up 15%, 20%. And you got to explain it. Well, we, we have this process here in Sancho County where, where, you know, it seems to me if you, if you were to spread out, you were just to trend these neighborhoods more frequently at a lower rate, you'd have, it just stands to reason, you'd have fewer appeals and free up some staff time, yes?
Yeah.
And that's just a...
That's why I'm asking if there's a way to prioritize.
That's, and that's not a, that's, that, right, I mean, that's just a, it's a...
Prioritize the other part.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is two years. I've been standing here doing this for two years with these guys, trying to get, I mean, trying to get to from point A to point B, what I think are pretty wholly rational ends. And I just, you know, we keep trying. We're not going to get, we keep working, and we have the city of South Bend and the city of Mishawaka working collaboratively with them, with the assessor's office. Penn Township, they're off and running. They recognize the benefits, and they're making great progress. And so the idea was to, in my judgment, let's see what Penn Township does. If you have any questions, if you have any hesitancy about the value of some of these things, let's see what happens in Penn, and then we'll try it, you know, in Sancho County at large. So he's served as kind of a pilot, he's been very cooperative, and he's been successful. So I'd like to see us move forward, and any help you all could give in terms of this process would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Pressey.
I guess, are you aware of any discussion that the commissioners have tried to have, what Mr. and Mrs. Mandričić, in regards to this issue?
Well, I know that when we have these meetings, a commissioner is usually present at those meetings, and so, and Mr. Woods will be there in representing to Ms. Mandričić, you know, the desire, the commissioners, and there really isn't any, there's no, you know, the commissioners are on board, but I mean, you know, they're, they're supportive, at least for sure Mr. Castellini is and Ms. Fleming is, but I mean, they, they're not, they're in agreement with it, and they're there to help and facilitate and say, you know, we're ready to sign a contract with TMA. What do you need us to do, you know, so?
Yeah, and you stated that, that they have to sign the contract.
They got to sign the contract, and they're ready to go. They'll say, we'll sign it, and they had Jamie Woods looking at it, it's okay, but we need the final okay from Ms. Mandričić.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought during the budget process, when Mr. Castellan and Rosemary was in, that they were on the same page.
They are ostensibly, they are on one level, it's just I haven't, we're still waiting on, you know, and you know, maybe tonight something's happening, and maybe a contract will be, you know, forthcoming, but...
Why would you say that?
I'm just wishful thinking. I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but I, it just, it seems like it's been a long time to kind of move forward, you know, and I, you know, it's just, it's a long process.
It seems like a lot of this is a no-brainer, but we're having a hard time moving on a no-brainer, you know?
Well, is there a way we can get Rosemary to our committee meeting to explain the first sign of this?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be real, that'd be a great, that would be very helpful, I think, to say, okay, we're...
When you spend a dollar and get $10, usually it's an urgent matter.
I know, I know there's been some apprehension as far as just the change in the software and...
Well, that's the Exsoft, and that's, and I get that because, I mean, and I'm going to have to be looking at that Exsoft for a ta... I know, that's going to be staring at me in a couple of years also, and I know what that's going to mean for my staff if we're going to be switching, probably be looking at Exsoft. I get, it's going to be labor-intensive, a big pain in the neck, and I understand her hesitation there.
But you're not, but, but I'm saying, they're not mutually exclusive.
No, no, so I'm just saying, I get, I get kind of the pushback on that. I think it makes sense to go, I, it makes sense for me for her to go to Exsoft. I think that's what ought to happen, it'll save us a lot of money, it'd be more accurate, and it'll be, we free up a lot of IT time that is spent trying to cobble these things together. That part makes sense to me, the sort of like, the little bit of, wow, you know, I don't know if I want to put, take this thing on at this juncture, but the others just seem to be, like you say, no brainers.
Well, I mean, I'm more than happy to invite Ms. Mandričić to our next committee meeting, if that's the wish of the, wishes of the council.
I'll make a motion and Mr. and Ms. Morton contacts Mr. or Assessor and invite him to our meeting on the 3rd.
Consider it done. I'll contact her tomorrow.
Was she invited tonight?
Oh, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
So many of these questions, they either can't answer because they're Rosemary's questions, or they shouldn't answer. Well, I'm not sure it's fair to Rosemary to have this whole discussion without her in the room either.
Well, but wait a minute, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this, these, the same type of discussion, we've had this discussion with Rosemary in the room. Am I right or wrong? Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, so, I mean, Rosemary was at a, or the county assessor was at a presentation several weeks ago.
Very similar to this.
Exactly the same.
Exactly like this, even in more detail.
Yeah.
And that was fine for that, I mean, I think she probably should have been invited tonight.
Well, well...
So I wasn't sure if the council had invited her. I did let her know last week that we'd be meeting tonight and gave her the details, but I wasn't sure if the council had reached out to her.
Well, I'll say it again, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Root, but Ms. Mandričić has been present when even a more detailed presentation was, was given with, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Nolan was there, the mayor of Mishawaka was there, the mayor of South Bend was there, so this is nothing new. So now, I don't have a problem with when I invite her in a couple of weeks, that we will revisit and do this presentation again, if that's the wish of this council. I don't have a problem with that at all. I'm just making, I'm just saying for clarification, Mr. Root, you know, she, she is aware of this.
Well, I understand that, but she should probably be invited to every meeting along these lines. I think it's only fair of Rosemary.
Well, if anybody's trying to be fair to Ms. Mandričić, it's me. Believe that when I tell you. So I'll make sure that she finds out tomorrow, and she'll be at the next meeting. All right? Anything else?
I agree with you, Mark.
I didn't say I disagreed with you, Mr. Tanzrak.
No, I'm, I'm, so I agree with you.
I didn't say I disagreed with you. Next privilege of the floor, Mr. Tanzrak.
Should we also invite the Penn Township assessor?
That's fine.
Should we have both?
That's fine.
They're both, they're all the same.
Fine with me. Next privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, on anything not on tonight's agenda.
Can I go ahead?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. Deborah Doral, 21677 Auton Road, South Bend. I'm working with the Open Space and Agricultural Alliance, that is, has formed to respond to the Indiana Enterprise Center. I'm here to inquire about the process. We have been told that there is a formal presentation when this plan is finalized toward the end of the year, and this group would like some time to make a counter proposition, presentation to the council, and I'm wondering what that process would be. I did see this nice presentation here. We could have people just line up and do their three minutes, but we have a more organized kind of presentation, and so we're hoping that we would get some advance notice when this presentation by the Office of Economic Development is going to be made to the council and friends for maybe the small committee meeting, which usually does not allow that much public input, but we're asking what that process would be, and that we would have enough notice to prepare a presentation. So I realize you can't answer all these things right now necessarily, but I just wanted to get it on the record.
Mr. Shallow, would you like to comment on that at all?
I saw you run into the chairs, and I must have heard that I've done it myself. Bill Shallow, Economic Development. So we're a year into the master planning process. We anticipate that by the end of year, we should have all of our reports and studies and drafts and documents and maps and everything put together. We just, through the Redevelopment Commission today, approved a, an agreement with NICD to do a shared master plan study for the South Shore Station in New Carlisle. So there will continue to be studies that will carry over past the end of the year. At this point in time, we don't have any end-of-project plans, meetings set or anything, but as we go through the process to amend the comprehensive plan and amend the zoning ordinance if we so choose, or amend the development area plan, we will have those scheduled, and there'll be public meetings at the Redevelopment Commission, Area Plan Commission, and also this body. So I would imagine that those would take place after, after the first of the year, but again, we don't have a calendar for that at this point in time, but that would presumably be the timeline based on the process we're working on. We have several things that are working through the district right now, and so those are continuing to be addressed, and so that's kind of the timeline we're on at this point.
Is there a way to keep a open line of communication?
Certainly. We have a, we have a website, sjcindiana.com backslash Indiana Enterprise Center, has all our meeting minutes and meeting announcements, things like that, everything related to the project. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. As we have meeting announcements, we post them, we post them in the Tribune, we work with the media to do those, but we will continue to reach out to the groups like the Open Space Alliance, the environmental, the ENI Environmental Group that I think's been here a couple of times before to address you, and other groups, and we continue to keep those groups in the loop as we make decisions, so...
That, I mean, that's really what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Absolutely. The goal is to be as open and transparent as possible. Absolutely.
Ma'am?
Thank you. And one final thing about that, New Carlisle does have a comprehensive plan that they put together about a decade ago, I believe. I don't know if the council members have copies of that, if they have reviewed that, but I do believe that has some bearing on this project, so...
If you'd like to provide that to our administrative person, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right?
Be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Kornemeyer. My address is 55412 Prem Road in Elkhart. I come here to discuss noise pollution. It's a major problem in St. Joe County. Through the decades, I have engaged with a number of St. Joseph County residents and public officials in trying to reduce noise pollution, but apparently to no avail. Many times while attending religious gatherings in the county, loud boom boxes from vehicles rattle the windows of the building I and others are in. The same holds true for car windows while driving around the county. I urge St. Joseph to turn to its neighbor, to the east, Elkhart County, to learn and to be inspired on how a community can effectively reduce noise. In the year 2009 alone, the city of Elkhart issued more than 1,100 noise citations, starting at $250 each and escalating to $2,500, by using a combination of unmarked law enforcement vehicles, public service announcements, and billboards. The Elkhart Truth newspaper has reported numerous times through the years of a vehicle being cited for noise pollution only for the law enforcement officer discovering an outstanding warrant and/or finding weapons and drugs in the vehicle. In addition, in May of this year, the Elkhart County, two Elkhart County officers were awarded plaques from the Noise Free America Coalition for their dedication in enforcing the Elkhart County Noise Ordinance. I urge you to make noise reduction a priority at all of your meetings. Here's to a healthier, safer, and happier community.
Thank you.
I also have a, that basically the handout I'd be happy to share.
Yes.
Can I give that to someone? Okay.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Brett Davis, 310 South Main Street, Department One, Lakeville. I just would like to thank the council for the approval of the budget for the Health Department for this year. I did speak to you all earlier this year, in concern to that. I've been to all of these council meetings since, as well as Board of Health meetings, and I greatly appreciate the help of all of you and the Board of Health for helping us out in the department and helping the residents of St. Joe County. At a prior, at the first reading of Bill 5718, Councilman File gave an impassioned speech about giving all county employees raises. That did, that did mean something deep to me, and I greatly appreciate his and all of your concerns for the county employees, and I look forward to the cooperation between the Health Department and the council in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to exercise their right for privilege of the floor? Kelly Dunn may have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Nolan?
Okay, kind of on that note, now it seems, so it's all, and we're going to talk about stuff that's on the agenda. Go ahead and, little comments, congratulations to everybody involved in this year's budget. It's always, it's a grinding process. It starts for Southern March, and we just got done with it tonight. All the council members, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Parry, in the back, it's my face in the back. Everybody, it's a long and grueling process, and I appreciate all the commitment, and we're able to get some long overdue raises for our employees. able to get some long overdue raises for our employees, along with getting, uh, building a fiscally responsible budget, so thank you.
Appreciate the comments, Mr. Nolan.
I'll make this brief. I did want to thank all of you for your hard work. I really, really appreciate the diligence with which you looked into this, into the budget process. I just wish, you know, our residents could see your commitment and see how intent you are on doing what's right and doing what's fair, and not just by, you know, the workers of by St. Joseph County. It's, you're an impressive group of people, and I feel honored to work with you. I want to thank my deputy auditor, John Murphy, for his hard work, dedication tirelessly and, you know, without fail, just, you know, trying to help us come up with the good numbers. Mr. Dalton and his help to us, he was, did a, did a great job. It was, it's, it's a shame that, you know, the, the paper tried to characterize, you know, his, his position is in opposition to ours, and I had, both of us talked to Mr. Booker about that and expressed our indignation at that, so I just want to get that out there and appreciate Ms. Preo and her, her hard work in doing this, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments for council? I'd like to say thank you to everyone and all their hard work, and especially a unanimous passing of the budget. Thank you very much. And motion to adjourn?
So.
You ready to second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Close.
Aye.